Call the meeting to order. Those that care to, please stand for opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron, what is your prayer?
First of all, we just thank you for this day and we'll just thank you for this city and thank you for all the the great things and the great people that make up, make up the city and the community. And Lord, I pray God should would guide and direct us in all that we do and all that we say tonight as we take up the issues of the city. Just watch over us, God, and be with our community, be with our citizens, be with our families. Be with our elected legislators, Lord, both federal and state. Guide and direct them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. I see up on the screens, it's the mayor's announcements. So I guess I probably ought to say something. Uh, before we get started with the appointment of planning and zoning commissioners, I have been told very specifically to let everybody in the room know that our city attorney is on via Zoom. She wanted to make sure everybody knew she was here. I didn't let her come tonight because she was just diagnosed with flu. And I told her, stay away from me. And she said, no, 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 it's been 24 hours. And I was like, I don't care. Stay away. So she is at home listening and probably cursing me now after I've said all that. Uh, moving on to appointment of planning and zoning commissioners. There has been a vetting process and I am supposed to present to the the council for your advice and consent on these individuals. So this is what I'm asking for is advice and consent of Michael Mann and William Pennell. Michael Mann to complete the term of Brandon Andrews through June 21st, 2022. And William Pennell to complete the term of Kevin Hahn through June 21st, 2022. These individuals have been interviewed. They have been vetted by our builds department and, um, Mr. Nelson, do you care if I ask you a few questions? Uh, just for the information for council, how many applicants did we have? How many interviews took place?
I believe we had a total of three applicants. Is that correct, Karen? Five? Okay, so five.
Five. And you interviewed these people?
We did.
And what are your thoughts?
Uh, for, for the two that were recommended to you, Mayor, and for you to recommend to the council, we, we found that they're both, uh, both articulate, both qualified. Um, they've stated an unbiased desire to serve in the community. Uh, just to facilitate and help us grow.
They understand the time commitment and the requirements required under the planning and zoning rules?
Correct.
And they've committed to being able to fulfill those requirements?
Correct.
Hearing that information, I'm asking for the advice and consent of council. Do we have any objections to these two individuals fulfilling the remainder of the open rules? Seeing none, I guess they are appointed. Moving on to citizen participation, I'm going to open it up to citizen participation. We will grant anybody wishing to speak three minutes to speak on a topic. And I understand that we have Evan Watson and Wyatt Jennings here to speak. Is that correct? So approach the podium, state your name and your address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. We'll tag team it. That'd be great.
That's fine. My name's Evan Watson. I live at 1183 West Broad Street in Republic.
Wyatt Jennings, 14th South Michonne.
Welcome both. And we'll, we'll give them six minutes since they're standing up here together. That seems fair.
Well, this is the president of the POA that we have, and I'm the vice president. And go ahead.
Yeah, we have some documents, some packets that we're going to discuss for the board.
Yep, fine. Where, where are we getting handed here?
Oh, well, this one's ours, sorry.
Oh, yep. You keep that one. I'll take this one. Alright.
You want me to give one of these to everyone?
Well, so what are we here to do? Let's ask that.
What, 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 what has taken place? We are requesting the City of Republic to write us a letter so that we can dissolve our POA slash HOA.
Okay, we were instructed by our attorney that we hired to come talk with the city about it.
And who did you hire?
Uh, Hardy, Ms. Hardy. All that information's in the packet. There's, uh, contents and things in there. So we're going, we're going to give you a shotgun blast or some things.
Give us a shotgun blast.
Documents and things like that. You can call us.
Very good.
If you have further questions or things like that. But basically, uh, we've been, um, I guess, working with this POA for like three years. I guess, uh, at that time, the contractor or the developer, once they sell 70 homes, they allow the homeowners to take over the association. So we took over the association. And, um, you know, in the last few years, uh, houses got hot. Some of the members of the board, they sold their homes and left. Uh, people moved in and out. Uh, right now, and then in the, in the, in the, in the letter, it says a bunch of other different things. But, you know, with, you know, inflation and all these other things, that people were living life.
Mm-hmm.
And so at this point, the fees were manageable, very small. But now people, they like, hey, look, I don't want to pay the fees. I don't want to do this. I don't want to do that. And so, uh, a large amount of the people, more than two-thirds of them, signed a document saying that they wanted to dissolve it.
We got together and had a meeting for the whole community, and that's, it was also voted on.
Okay.
Yes, and all the paperwork's in there is for that. And that's technically why we're here. We're trying to enforce whatever the, uh, the community asked for.
Okay. Um, obviously, we weren't prepped necessarily for this. Uh, what we're going to have to do is look into it further. I mean, you can, you-
Yeah, we expected that.
Perfect. So, and as you heard, my attorney's virtual right now. So what I'd like to do is be able to get in touch with her. Talk through this situation, look through the materials, and then have her reach out to you and discuss what the next steps would be.
There's a packet for the lawyer and there's a packet for the council.
Perfect. Is there anything else you want us to know in your time?
Nope. As far as we know, it's that we're just trying to do that so that way we can get our liabilities off of the POA.
Was that, was that me?
No, that was me.
Oh, yeah. I was like, well, my, my watch buzzed at the same time. It's like, wow, alright. Uh, is your attorney's name and number in this?
Yes, it's in the packet. There's a table contents in front of it, and I think that, uh-
There really is?
Yeah.
Are you looking for a job?
Oh, no.
Just asking. Excellent. Folks, I very much appreciate you coming in. I don't know exactly what the next steps are because frankly, this is the first time I've seen something like this. But that's why we have attorneys that will jump into it and we'll figure it out and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Alright. And just so everybody knows, you will not hurt our feelings if you don't stay for the rest of the meeting. So if you- If no, you go. Enjoy your evenings.
Thank you. I apologize.
No, no, nothing to apologize for. Alright, moving on to the next spot on our agenda. This is the election of the mayor pro temp. Our annual April election, in case I decide I want to take a vacation, um, to fill in for me. And so I would open the floor for nominations for the mayor pro temp. Don't everybody speak at once.
Eric Franklin.
Mr. Updike nominates Eric Franklin? Do we have any other nominations?
It's up to you.
I, I actually don't get to say anything at all because I'm the, uh, any other nominations? Hearing none, we will take a roll call vote for Eric Franklin for mayor pro temp.
Councilmember Dyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Nay.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Can I ask a question? Jim, do you not want to be mayor pro temp?
It doesn't matter to me.
You said aye. I don't like these situations. I'm going to say no. Nay.
Councilmember Buck?
Aye.
Is my count right? That is four to two for Eric Franklin? I, does it have, have to be unanimous? Does it have to be a majority? Does it have to be? Megan, unmute. So it's just a simple majority? It's not, uh, because we have members missing, that doesn't create a problem?
Do you have a quorum? Um, I'm going to have to have a little church check right now, but I have 99 members of the council already about to meet.
Okay.
Aye. That's correct. I think it's just a simple majority.
Alright, so we've got a majority. Mr. Franklin, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, moving on to, uh, the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda. We have items one through five on that consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Upcoming boards, commissions, and committee schedule. We have a city council meeting on May 3rd, 2022. A board of adjustments meeting on May 5th, 2022. Planning and zoning meeting now fully, like in place. May 9th, 2022, and city council meeting, May 17th, 2022. Moving on to all business and table items, specifically number six on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-18 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city council approving the final plat of the Lakes at Shuler Ridge Phase 3 subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Haynes was here last time. Any updates from the city?
No.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 22-18.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries, six to zero. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-19 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city council approving the final plat of the Old Savannah Phase 3A subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from city?
No.
Any discussion or questions from council? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 22-19.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote. Motion carries, six to zero. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-20 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city council calling an election on the question of renewing a city sales tax for local parks to fund parks and recreation general operations. Designating the time for holding said election and authorizing and directing the city clerk to give notice to the county clerks of said election.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Keeling?
Thank you, Mayor. Jared Keeling, Parks Recreation Director. There were a few follow-up questions. You provided some information to this last meeting. I just want to let you know that we provided those, so I'm just here to answer any questions.
Have you heard anything from the citizens? Are you getting any sort of, uh, pushback or support?
I haven't really heard anything one way or the other. I have not. Now, obviously, we've, the projects are out there. Uh, they're out there on our city website. Been favorable response to the projects on the operations things. I, thing, of it, I have not heard anything, though.
Questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just a comment. Um, I've, I've had a, a great opportunity to speak with several different people on this, and of, of the, the proposals, the proposal A was, uh, very favorable. A lot of favorable feedback. People very excited about, you know, what Republic has to offer and also very concerned about the maintenance of our existing facilities. So, uh, just in, not to answer Mr. Mayor's question, but in the feedback I received from citizens, this was more favorable than non-favorable from the citizen's perspective.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I do need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 22-20.
Motion. Second.
We've got lots of motions and lots of seconds. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Do you get nervous at this point, Jared?
I'm just going to sit here and watch that television.
Motion carries, six to zero. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-21 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city council calling an election on the question of renewing a city sales tax to fund parks and recreation capital improvement projects. Designating the time for holding said election and authorizing and directing the city clerk to give notice to the county clerks of said election.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nothing further to add on this one, sir.
Any questions or discussion from council on this issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I've got a question. Uh, Mr. Keeling?
Sure.
What's the, uh, current occupancy on the Aquatic Center?
Uh, great question. We put it at around 1,100. However, uh, that's a lot. We've, we've hit that mark twice, and we, we've kept people out. But that's a big number. Now, we've, we've, we extended the footprint back of it, I think, in 2009 to take more people, but the answer to your question is 1,100.
1,100. And so with this addition of the Aquatic Center expansion, what would be the increased capacity?
Haven't ran that yet. I mean, we're probably doubling the size of footprint. What I like about it, though, is we have a lot more green space in common areas, so that would increase the occupancy. But I would say conservatively double.
Double?
Yep. It's about double the footprint size.
And so, um, I've, another question. Um, one of the things, and, and I'm just kind of going through some of my questions, and I also have some things that I would like to share that were brought to me by the citizens. Um, my next question is, um, in, in discussion and looking back at this, of course, the, the most recent thing we've had to experience was the pandemic. Um, of course, that created a lot of different issues between closures, limited capacity, and whatnot. With these new two measures, do you have any concern with what we would do in the future as far as filling in the gap for loss of funding if we were to have to experience something like that again?
And the additional pandemic?
And, well, not pandemic, but something that limited our funding and limited our availability to be open. We, we had shutdowns. We had, uh, a number of things that we did for COVID protocol. Um, concern from the citizens as well as mine is what if we run into a scenario like that again? What are we going to use to fund the-
I think I'm tracking your question. So the, the, the sales tax, in, in essence, makes the P and I payments. The, the gate revenue pays for the operational expense. So we were able to weather the storm of COVID. We were able to do it just because we weren't open a lot. We had limited capacity. We cut back on staff. That's how we got through that. Now, granted, we had a loss of revenue during COVID. It was around $4,000. But we also trimmed our expenses dramatically, cut back on payroll, cut back on operational expense. So I think that answers your question.
That, that was my main concern is that, I know we're fresh on that, so we, we definitely have a plan, what we did last time. I'm, I'm just fearful, you know, if we do experience that again. And so you've already answered my next question there as well. So, moving on, if this passes tonight and the voters approve this, if put onto the ballot, um, this, most of this, especially for the sports park, was the phase one?
That's correct.
What does phase two look like as far as, I, I know you can't give it an accurate lookout, but in your mind, what sort of a year are we looking at as a phase two before we can approach the next phase?
So it would be revenue dependent, uh, sales tax growth dependent, um, favor of sales tax or potential large sponsorship or donor. If asked the point question, I would say we're probably looking around 2027. That would be three years maybe after initial construction. But that's just a kind of a guesstimate at this point. I mean, sales tax revenue's been trending favorably, but we'd have to have more than that just to build to phase two, so.
Thank you. And, um, that was pretty much the majority of my questions. Um, I did want to relay some of the things that were brought to me by citizens, since they didn't have an opportunity to speak at the last meeting. Um, some of the, the interactions that I got, talking about feedback from the citizens and what was brought. Um, maintenance of the parks and improvement of existing parks was a, a very important priority with the majority of people that I had talked to. Um, and that includes all of our existing parks, bathrooms, lights. A lot of the same concerns that were brought to citizens in the 2021 citizen survey, a lot of what was brought to me was echoed in that as well. Um, there, there's a lot of people in the community and, and other concerns that were brought to me as well as, as this long-term debt and a small percentage of people in Republic being able to utilize these facilities. Um, their concern was also the fact that they're seasonal, and so we also have to deal with weather. We have a-
Sure.
They're only open a short time of the year anyway. And so a lot of their concern and, and what they're living in their personal lives between cost of living, inflation, inflation, uh, you know, housing availability. There was just a lot of worries long-term of, uh, you know, whether they would get to use this or not. But, um, other than that, there was a lot of confusion. Um, it was very hard to get people on the same page. And there's two, and, and the city did a very good job of labeling them. It's, it's not my confusion. It's just, uh, you know, in presenting this to the general public, there does tend to be a lot of confusion. The other thing that was brought to me that was a concern by citizen is in, in one of our meetings, one of the stats that was brought was 55% of non-residents are using the Aquatic Center. And so then they were concerned, 45% of residents are the ones that actually get to use this Aquatic Center, but the citizens of Republic are on the hook for this if our revenue does not give us enough to pay for this. And so these are just concerns that were brought to the citizens. Of course, I could go through the citizen survey, and a lot of those were brought to me as well. Part of it was clearing out the confusion with everybody. Um, there was a mix of people that this is the first time in my sitting on council that I have seen, uh, a possibility of a tax decrease. And so it was also pressed on me very difficult for that opportunity on a tax decrease. But, um, there were a lot of good feedback on some of this stuff, but, uh, again, I would say the biggest concern people brought to me was the fact that this was such a large debt to occur over a long period of time. And so they were more concerned and their priorities were a little bit different than what this ordinance gives. Another thing that was brought to me and, and discussion was the, the Huna and the problems that we've had historically with the Huna. And I know we've had some downtime. We've had some problems with maintenance issues. And so I guess, not to move into a question, but my question would be, you know, the Huna, we've had the Huna for quite a while. We know what it looks like now. 20 years from now, what is our lazy river going to look like and, and the maintenance upkeep and issues that we don't potentially know about yet that we could run into later on? And so it was reminded to me back to the Huna and, and some of the things we've, and I don't want to go into all of that tonight, but it's a concern from citizens, and so I want to make sure that they have an opportunity to be heard here before council and with everyone at council. Other than that, um, that pretty well covers all of the concerns the citizens brought to me. When I'm looking at this as a council member, after dealing with their input, hearing everything I have here, um, I am a little fearful. I'm very supportive of the proposition A. Um, I do have a little bit of concern if this one goes to ballot as well, that there will be an amount of confusion. And so I feel that it does put the other one at a fair amount of risk. And so with all considerations, um, I personally, and I know there's seven of us up here, and so it's not my opinion that makes this, but I'm not in favor of this for a number of those reasons and the considerable amount of pushback versus favorability that I've received talking to citizens on this one. Sorry for being long-winded.
It's okay.
I have a lot to get out.
What I can assure you is, and we've already put a lot of thought into it previous to these meetings, but going forward, we will do everything we can to clear up confusion. Now, there are two measures on the ballot, and that alone could be confusion. But you have my promise, in the next three or four months, we will try to provide the clarity pillar as much as we can to those. Even on the ballot language, we put months of work in the ballot language, like this pays for this, this pays for this. So we'll do our best to clear, clear that up, so.
And, and, and I appreciate that, because when I look at that, it's clear and it's very easy for me to see it, but in talking with citizens, uh, there's, I, I don't know how much of that confusion is actually reading that versus, you know, reading the first line. So, but, but yeah, the clarity is definitely something that I dealt with quite often, is people just confused as to there was two measures, uh, the continuation of the tax and, and things like that. But you, you guys have done a good job on the paperwork, in my perspective.
Any other questions or discussion? Uh, Mr. Gerke?
The Aquatic Center now, profit-wise, how does it do?
So the Aquatic Center pays for operations, which is in a municipal pool. That's pretty much all you can hope, hope for. Now, we have to have the, the uh, sales tax in place to pay the P and I payments. If we, if we didn't have the sales tax to play, pay P and I payments, you could imagine what our mission, mission fee would be. It would be similar to other water parks that are in for private business, 20 to 25 dollars. But the beauty of sales taxes makes those P and I payments, and then you, you take the gate, you take the concessions, you take the pro shop, and that pays for your operations. So we are, are operating level or at a, at a profit on operations from gate revenue. So that's good.
And both of the existing, um, proposals are renewals that have been used to either fund operations or new projects historically?
That's correct, yes.
Thanks. Mr. Updike, did you still have a question?
Yeah, I, I want to touch on something Eric said. Eric said, uh, can the new sports complex be used year-round? I mean, have tournaments year-round, be operational year-round, and use for different sports year-round?
Uh, weather-dependent, obviously, but what we have preliminary designed is turf. Now, with that said, you're still weather-dependent. I mean, somewhat, but turf allows you to do some things that you just cannot flat-out do on dirt-skinned infield's or grass soccer fields or whatever it might be. Uh, case in point, my daughter had a game last, whatever day with the deluge was, that night she played on turf in Forsyth. So you can get a lot more things than you have to do, has many cancellations of big, bigger type tournaments or bigger type leagues with the turf. Uh, I hope that answers your question, so.
Any other questions or discussion on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, just curiosity question. What's, what's the, uh, what's the comparison between the cost of maintaining turf versus the cost of maintaining grass?
Yeah, turf isn't maintenance-free, 100%. So the, uh, I don't know if they're chopped up tires or chopped up black bits. I get them in my shoes every time I go. My daughter has a softball game. But about every 10 years, you're looking at replacement total of those, but you have to, you have to have a stockpile of those on hand, a top dress, and you have to groom that stuff as well. But the amount of labor goes down dramatically because you, we have six ballfields right now at Berman White, just taking baseball-soccer example. We have three guys working on those eight hours a day to get them prepped for the night, or five hours a day. I think I over-exaggerated that a little bit, but it's a lot of labor. And you have material costs in there as well. So once you have turf, you have turf, but your, your, your labor goes down and your material cost to maintain those goes down.
Is that turf on just the ballfields or the ballfields in soccer fields?
So the proposal includes turf on the infield's of the baseball-s softball fields and includes turf on the soccer fields.
So the outfield of the ball diamond will be just grass?
Yeah, yeah. That, I mean, obviously, that's not where you traditionally get your raps. Well, as long as it's graded properly, yeah. Exactly.
Yes, Keeling, and we've gotten into some fun travel baseball with my family, but I think the big deal is, it's less likely to get canceled.
Yeah.
People want to come out, out of town for tournaments. Knows the maintenance side of it, but it's less likely that your tournaments are going to get canceled due to weather.
So Elizabeth Town, Kentucky, and I reference it all the time. Prior to 2019, when they switched to turf on their infield's, they averaged hit or miss around 30% rainouts annually. After turf, they had, since 2019, and this is incredible, they have not been raining out once. So that tells you how much of a game changer it is, especially when you get into travel market. Because if you cancel for two or 300 teams, now, granted, they're a bigger operation than we are, but if, if you cancel for that amount, you're talking about a pretty big-size economic impact, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is just a renewal, right?
Yes, correct. Both of these are renewals, correct.
And how long has this tax been existing?
This particular one we're talking about now has been in place since 2003.
So it's been there a long time?
Yep.
And it would stand to reason that it should be renewed to help the parks do what they need to do?
What I like, Gary, and I appreciate you saying that, but I, I look back at that slide and I, I won't, I can pull it up and it might take me a minute, but what I take a lot of pride and a lot of value in is what we've done with those funds. Above and beyond what we said we were going to do it, thank you, Chris. But we've done a lot of other incredible things with that, with, with that money and that sales tax revenue, inclusive of, uh, scaling down, Chris, inclusive of land acquisition of two brand-new parks, one on the east side and one in Brookline. And those parks, and I think I said it last time, those two parks alone have tremendously popular. And that, and the amphitheater, yeah, it's popular. We, we average around 250 and 300. We're, we have 800 people coming through there this weekend. Just this weekend, 800 people are coming through the amphitheater. So what we've done, now, I'm proud of the Aquatic Center, I am, but above and beyond the Aquatic Center with these funds, those are what's some really proud things, I believe, for the whole community, so.
So in other words, if we hadn't had that tax, none of this would happen?
Yeah, the Aquatic Center would have happened. I, I want to state that. It would have happened, but these other ones would not have happened if it wasn't for growth in sales tax since 2003. There's been a lot of, a lot of growth since 2003. As you can imagine, Republic has grown a lot, but that growth has allowed for those other seven things on that screen and probably a few more too, so.
So it's a good idea for it to pass?
I can't speak of that, but.
Mr. Kirke. We talked about last time too, but I think it's important that there's debt associated with some other projects that's going away.
Correct.
That these funds were used to, to service historically.
Correct. So we, the Parks and Recreation Department have been in debt, well, since as long as I've been here. But for, on the aquatic center, we've been in debt since two thousand four. And on the community center, we've been in debt since two thousand one. Both of those large P and I payments are going away. The aquatic center goes away this year. And the P and I payments on the, uh, community center go away next year. So we are becoming debt-free at the, debt-free after the end of two thousand twenty-three. And that's what allows us to be here tonight, to, to go before you and say, hey, we can do, take on this debt to accomplish these projects. I'm, I was not here in November of two thousand three, but I'm certain someone took this podium and said, let's go into debt to fund the aquatic center. So.
I haven't gotten this question fully formed in my head, so that's probably dangerous to ask. But there's somebody sitting at home right now, maybe, or certainly playing around on Facebook, saying, these things are paid off. We're getting out of debt. Why don't we just quit? Why don't we just call it good? Right?
You could do that. However, as a city, we pride ourselves on being progressive and we also listen to our citizens. So our citizens have told us time and time again. They've actually told us four projects, the three represented to you tonight in Brookline Park. We've already started on Brookline Park ourselves internally. But our citizens have spoke fairly loudly in every citizen survey and online and in our open house meetings that these are the projects they're interested in. Back to Mr. Franklin's comment a while ago. We consciously made decisions here to have something for everyone. The amphitheater was, I mean, sorry, the, 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 my goodness, the work at J, J R Martin Park, the, the plaza area, the loop, all that stuff was the number one rated most thing in, I mean, like incredibly high rated in the last citizen survey. And there's a reason for that because it appeals everybody from a toddler to a senior. You can go out and enjoy the farmer's market. You can go out and enjoy Christmas lights. You can go out and enjoy nonprofit events. So those decisions, these three projects, now aquatic center would be another one to touch a lot. Now granted, if you're, if you're not of the athletic mind or you don't have children and athletics, you're probably not going to go out there a lot. Or maybe you are. I mean, maybe you have a grandson or a niece or nephew or whatever. But I think all of these projects touches every demographic in our city and we're proud of that too. So. But to your point, we could just rest. We could. However, I don't think that's who we are. But I also think our citizens have spoken and these are the projects that they want.
Mr. Mayor, and, and, and there was a lot of good feedback. It, I'm not trying to put everything under a bad scope. But, um, even going back to the citizen survey in two thousand twenty-one, um, and looking in the level of interest of new projects by parks, um, the new athletic complex was only given a twenty-eight percent interest and thirty-eight percent of people were not interested with thirty-four percent staying neutral.
Sure.
And so I would say of all of the things that I heard most about concerns, it was the new athletic complex. There was more favorability towards the aquatic center expansion and, and most favorably towards the farmer's market park. And so I think it was just a matter of the citizens that I spoke to that were against this. It was a matter of priority and what they saw as a priority for the city versus the priorities that we've placed before them on this ballot measure. And so I don't want to, to, to at all let, make people think that this is not something people were excited about. Of course, the lazy river is probably number one, but to, eye candy, so I kind of have to remove that eye candy a little bit and look at their concerns and see what they have to say. But that was something that was brought to my attention as well as in the citizen survey. And even going back to the citizen survey, in the summary of the six projects being considered by the Parks and Recs Department, the J R Martin Boulevard project garnered the most interest with sixty percent of respondents being very interested, followed by the outdoor adventure in Brookline Park, which of course is completed, which we appreciate.
Started on, yeah.
Yes, thank you. And then, uh, forty-five percent of respondents were very interested in expanding the aquatic center. And the next sentence is respondents were much less enthusiastic about the athletic complex, community center expansion and the indoor athletic training center. And so again, the citizen survey really reflected very well what citizens brought to me. But I just wanted to make that clear that this wasn't, everyone talked to me was against it. There was a certain priorities that a lot of the citizens that I've talked to see differently.
Yeah. I, speaking of that, and I, I appreciate all that. It's kind of stands to reason on the, on the athletics. Either you have a family in it or you don't. Now, in addition to what I, we have on the citizen survey, we got to look out for our own operations. So I can tell you, and I'm not making this up, and you can ask any of our staff, we're busting at the seams. I mean, we've got to have a place to operate. Uh, we have seven baseball softball fields. They're packed every single night. We're, we're making soccer fields everywhere just to accommodate eighty or ninety teams. So we're looking out for our own operations too. But we desire, which we've really have put a lot of focus over the last five or six years, to bring our leagues up twelve notches. And we're there, we're getting there. And that's the reason you're seeing more enrollment, more and more enrollment in soccer and baseball. We had room to grow. We had room to improve and we're doing that. We're, uh, we're matching U S, U triple S A guidelines and baseball software. I can't know the FIFA, is that what it is? We're matching FIFA guidelines in soccer. We're taking our game a lot more serious and that's, that's to attract, historically speaking, I'll go on a tangent here, but we, we had a tremendous amount of players up until about age eight. And when they got to about age eight, they either lost interest or they went elsewhere because our leagues just weren't that competitive. Now, we offer both. We have a, a great blend of both. We have recreational leagues all the way up to twelve, but we also have competitive leagues all up to twelve. So it's cool. So you, if, no, you no longer have to go somewhere else if you want to play competitive, more competitive type sports or you can stay recreational play right here as well. So we're, we're looking out for operations as well. Uh, I would love nothing more than to provide our citizens a tremendously cool place to play. We're doing it now with the best what we have, but man, give them the opportunity to play on next level facilities and that would be special.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, you just spawned another question. So it's, the, the soccer you said was recreational. Is the, uh, baseball, is that competitive or is that recreational?
We do both. We do both. However, I will say that our baseball and softball, just because I'm in that game with my daughter, we're not of the competitive thing and maybe we don't ever need to be. Our, our niche may be recreational, low-level competitive, and we're totally fine with that. Uh, you get into a little bit different market in ultra-competitive, but we're pretty good right now. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirke. This, this has been for twenty years or twenty-five years, this, the, the one that's sunsetting, this one we're talking about?
Uh, this one was the twenty years.
Twenty years?
Yeah.
So just, and again, the numbers have increased. We have more sales taxes as we've grown. But we would substantially reduce the budget we've had for the last twenty years for expansion, though, with the city growing if this wasn't to pass. Correct?
Will you say that again? I'm sorry.
We would substantially reduce our budget to fund projects compared to what we've historically had from the sales tax if this was to go away.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if this capital improvements were to fail here tonight or was voted no, and I think I said it last meeting, and it's just the truth. With our capital improvement projects would probably go to zero. Now, we carved out, I believe, a hundred thousand dollars out of our other funds to, I think, buy a couple trucks or whatever. But, uh, yeah, our, I mean, none of these projects obviously here would be happening. And then future projects, we'd have to, capital's always been tough for us. It's just been tough because the time you pay all your operating expenses, traditionally speaking, we've had about a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand left over in our budget for capital. You guys know, I mean, we have fleet. I mean, so if you buy three fleet, you're about done. So, but to your point though, the larger projects would definitely not be able to be accomplished. So. We, we wouldn't have a funding mechanism to, to, to pay P and I payments. So.
Yeah, I didn't put it very, very concise, but that, that we would, as we continue to grow, we'd have less of a budget than we had twenty years ago for capital expansion, the size of city is now compared to then.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Mayor, and, and so this passes tonight. This passes in August. Um, are, do we know what kind of a percentage rate we're looking at, uh, once we go to borrow these funds? And about approximately, if this does pass in August, what would be the timeframe of when we actually looked at applying for that funding?
To borrow the money?
To borrow the money.
I mean, we still have a lot of work to do to get there, but I would, I would venture to say late twenty-three, early twenty-four is when we'd be looking at a borrow. Because we still have obligations we have to pay off in two thousand twenty-three. Now granted, could we package some of that existing debt into, Mr. Cameron referenced this last, into the other debt? We could. However, I would probably prefer to get those paid off first. And we can do that as early as possibly as, as the mega payment in April. Is that what it is? So it was April of two thousand twenty-three. Yeah.
But before applying for the new funding?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to reiterate how grateful I am for the Parks and Rec Department. I think as we grow, the most beautiful thing about us growing and growing well is our Parks and Rec Department. It creates a sense of community and I think that's vital to the heartbeat of, of what we want from Republic. And so I know taxes, I, I'm not for taxes, but the beauty of this is that our taxes will not increase. So that is beautiful. We're maintaining. But then also I think one thing that we do have to remember is when we choose to live into a community that we are paying taxes into is that we, we want things out of the community. So it's not just you guys are giving us what we want. We get, we don't have to give anything in return to these taxes. We have such an amazing leadership right now. That's, it's a unique time period that we, that we have such good leadership in our Parks and Rec and our governmental and in our, I'm kind of biased to our private sector leader right now. So. It's pretty handsome. But, um, anyways, we're, we're authentic and we, we run this well. And so it's such a neat time to be able to move these, uh, projects forward and have the trust of the community um, and to do it well. And I just, um, I don't know, I just want people to, to understand that they have great leadership, that this is coming under and that they're going to use the money well. And it's vital to the growth as we grow in this community to maintain this level of community through our Parks and Rec. And you guys do such a beautiful job of that. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for a final passage of bill twenty-two dash twenty-one.
Motion.
Second. Laura, did you get?
Yes.
Perfect. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries five to one.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number ten on our agenda. Now, did I see this right? Is there an amendment to this?
Yes, there is.
You turned that on, right?
I turned it on.
All right.
So what's the amendment about?
So as you'll see in your packet, uh, there is a, it's not a material change, but we did the first reading of the broadband ordinance last, last meeting, knowing that there might be, when you have that many entities and attorneys involved, sorry, Megan and Mayor. So, but there was a lot of, a lot of hard work that went in there. So you'll see, uh, anything that's highlighted in yellow from the, the email that came from our city attorney. There is no, nothing substantive there. It basically says in the event that less than five parties remain on the RBI board, disagreement shall automatically be terminated and the RBI board shall be dissolved. And really again, um, nothing really material there. But we would ask that those amendments be made, uh, as presented by legal counsel. And, uh, we'll need a motion and a second to make those amendments.
Are there any questions or discussion from council about the amendment to item number ten, twenty-two dash twenty-two? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the amendment based upon the memo presented by Ms. McCall.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. It has been amended. Now we can go on to our regular handling of twenty-two dash twenty-two. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill twenty-two dash twenty-two as amended by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing the city administrator to execute a participation agreement with city utilities and various other surrounding communities as part of a regional broadband initiative dedicated to extending broadband high-speed internet services to Republic and surrounding areas.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cameron, do you have any updates that the council needs to know?
No, I do not.
Excellent. Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of bill twenty-two dash twenty-two as amended.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Do you want to make it a rule that we have a motion and a second before anybody touches that thermostat?
It's an oven here.
Well, I was just going to say, I tried to turn it down.
Did you break it?
I think I failed because it's seventy-six degrees. It's hot, but I don't know if I turned on the air.
Who broke it?
Usually I'm cold, but I will say I'm really hot right now.
Motion carries six to zero on the bill twenty-two dash twenty-two, not the thermostat.
Get the engineer involved.
Look, if he starts getting out tools, somebody stop him. All right? He's actually not qualified to work on that. Moving on to item number eleven on our agenda. That's right, we're on number eleven, right? All right, good. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill twenty-two dash twenty-three by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing the city administrator to enter into a direct loan agreement and promissory note with Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation for four, four point two million dollars in funds to be used towards the highway MM expansion.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from city? Any questions or discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I will just say this one more time for those that do not know what this, this actual ordinance is for the community. This is to expand MM to five lane from the Amazon site out to I forty-four. I want to thank Mr. Nelson, all the staff. We worked with the governor's staff. They are contributing six million dollars. When this is all said and done, even though it says we're borrowing four point two million, don't let it be a misnomer or, uh, misrepresented. We are borrowing the money, but we actually have the money already somewhat in place. And again, we don't believe this will cost our, our citizens anything when it's all said and done. So I want to commend the staff, thank the governor's staff, thank Green County for their inter, their intergovernmental agreement, uh, that they're participating with us. And so this was a joint effort. But I do believe when people were asking, what are we doing to help the transportation? This is something we've been working on since two thousand nineteen. Uh, and so we're finally seeing the first part of it. So I just want to thank everybody that's worked on it and publicly acknowledge the governor's staff and Green County and this, this body for allowing us to negotiate on your behalf to make those deals happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I need a motion and a second for the final passage of bill twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries six to zero. Not qualified to fix it. You're qualified to mess with it. You're management. You just, I don't want you trying to fix it. All right, moving on to new business. This is item number twelve on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of bill twenty-two dash twenty-four by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately ninety-one point five-five acres located at the sixty-five hundred block of West US Highway sixty from agricultural AG and light industrial M one to Wilson's Valley Plan Development District, PDD.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Karen Haynes, Assistant Builds Administrator. Uh, Wilson's Valley LLC has applied for the rezoning again of ninety-one point five-five acres of land. This is located at the intersection of Farm Road one oh three and East US Highway sixty. The parcel is currently vacant. The property is surrounded by existing agricultural, commercial and industrial properties. Uh, we have, uh, Green County Agricultural and Light Manufacturing plus the railroad spur directly to the north. We have Green County Agricultural and Agricultural Residential to the south. Green County Agricultural and Suburban Residential to the east. And then the Old Stone and Sixty West Plan Development Districts to the west. The PDD is a mixed-use development consisting of eight commercial lots, two areas of multifamily residential, one hundred and sixty single-family residential lots and a regional detention area. The development plan contains new water, sanitary sewer and stormwater systems to support the development and the required collector and primary arterial streets. The property can be served by municipal water and sanitary sewer services. Um, the property does contain a number of sinkholes, which if you look at the development plan, there are the round areas with the subsequent other round circle. Um, the smaller round circle is the actual identified sinkhole. And then the larger round circle is the thirty-foot buffer. Um, so you'll notice there are quite a few on this particular parcel. Uh, the arrangement of the actual, um, roads and, um, plotted lots kind of meander around the physical constraints of the property. The property does not contain any floodplain, but does include a blue line stream, which is managed by the Corps of Engineers. The development of the new primary arterial street, uh, coincides with MoDOT's preliminary plans to build a new segment of State Highway MM. Uh, this is from the intersection of US Highway sixty to the north, all the way down to Republic Road or the intersection of State Highway ZZ to the south. The rezoning is in compliance with the city's adopted plans, which include the water and sewer master plans, the comprehensive plan and the land use plan. Uh, several citizens spoke in regards to the rezoning request. Uh, concerns included stormwater, buffering, floodplain and access. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did unanimously recommend approval and the Builds Department is also recommending approval of the request.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a question right off the top, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
And it echoes the access issue you just mentioned. The developers. And it echoes the access issue you just mentioned. The developers aware of the potential MM and what are they doing to commit to working with us to make sure that access is not a problem?
Yes. So, they've been aware of the preliminary MoDOT plans from the very beginning. Our conversations with the developer actually began about this time last year. They have been very diligent in working as MoDOT has started to develop the actual alignment of what that new road looks like. It is identified as a primary arterial in our, our master plan for transportation. It will probably be a C Street during the actual development phase of the development, at which point, at some point in the future, when MoDOT has funding for the remainder segments to the north and then also to the south, we'll then dedicate it back to MoDOT. The other major street, in addition to obviously the local streets that serve individual lots and parcels, is the Collector, which is along the southern boundary. That is another road that's identified on our master transportation plan and master thoroughfare plan. They are aware of it and they are aware of the constraints in regards to those roads.
Thank you. Questions or discussion from council? Yes, sir.
Mayor, so the, the proposed arterial, are those roads that you're talking about? Or where would the proposed MM highway come through on this?
So, it's, it's listed as COR Primary Arterial. So it kind of meanders through a good portion of this development. If you look at where it goes to the south, that is a direct alignment to State Highway ZZ. So, in all probability, once they get through the design plans, that'll probably be some sort of intersection improvement, maybe a roundabout, maybe a stoplight. So, when we started the actual conversation with the developer, we kind of gave them point A and point B and said, "There is this major road coming through. Make it work with your development." Again, with the fiscal constraints of this particular property, they made it work. MoDOT has also reviewed it and it does work with those preliminary plans.
Right, clarification. It says Phase 2 there, the intersections to the south. There's the three-way intersection right now.
Yeah, it's actually another parcel to the south, but yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
This is, sorry, this is more curiosity question. Do sinkholes get bigger over time or do they maintain their size?
Yes, yes and no. Sinkholes are kind of an anomaly, like you really never know until you get down and start studying them. And I think even at that point when a geologist goes in and does a study, you never really know. That's why our particular ordinance does require a buffer, and that's a 30-foot buffer around the identified sinkhole rim. So, once we get through a development, they'll go and do an actual sinkhole report for each of those identified sinkholes to make sure that rim is how it is actually indicated on their mapping systems, and then develop that 30-foot buffer. So, no development, no major grading work in that actual buffer area.
Thank you.
Well, I stand corrected. Andrew did get his turn on.
Yes, thank you.
It's cooler.
I stand corrected. I, I will absolutely admit when I'm wrong, and I was wrong, so well done. Anybody bring a blanket?
Could you turn that back down?
I will now open this up for citizen comment. Are there any citizens here wishing to speak in favor? You know the rules.
Yes, I'm Ricky Haas with Olson, 550 East St. Louis in Springfield, Missouri. So, Karen hit on a lot of this here. So, we've been working on this project for over six years, or six months now, trying to figure out a layout. As you see on the plan there, it is just littered with sinkholes. And then, we've also got this 150-foot electric easement, which also has a 50-foot general utility easement south of it. So we have a 200-foot wide swath kind of through the property that we can't really do anything with. So we've decided to put some amenities there, put trails through there. And then, like I said, we've got the sinkholes, and then outside of the sinkholes, we actually need to provide stormwater detention. And when we go to final design, we plan for the detention to meet city requirements. The city requires that, how the stormwater is draining off right now, after we add all the impervious, it has to drain, drain off the same amount. So there won't be any downstream negative impact to neighbors. The, the commercial area that you see in the southeast corner, Phase 3 Area A there, commercial, that borders the kind of rural residential to the south. We plan to put a Type B buffer in there.
Could you define that for me, please?
So, there's a couple of options in the city code. Ultimately, it's a mix of trees, shrubs, and fencing and a, at least a 15-foot wide swath through there, built up, vegetated, fenced, to kind of block the, block the lights, block the headlights, block, have a full visual block through there. Karen hit on the, the MM road. Olson is actually working with MoDOT on that piece. And so, we were able to get that alignment in there to the latest that we have from MoDOT. So, we feel that that's as accurate as it can be right now. So we're giving up that right away. Then Karen hit on the Collector on the south end. From there, we plan to phase this, obviously. And so, we're going to start from the west end, and that would be Phase 1 Single Family through there, and sort of work our way east along the project in hopes that, you know, as we complete phases, MoDOT gets closer to having that funding and we can get that road in place. With that, I'll just say that, you know, there was a lot of issues with this property. And so, we feel like we've come to a really good resolution on how this needs to be laid out here. And, you know, concerns that we got from the neighborhood, we feel like we're addressing those with buffers and stormwater detention, those types of pieces. So, with that, I believe that's all I had. So, I'm here if you guys have any questions.
Any questions this evening? Mr. Updike.
Okay, I've, I've been in fire service for many, many years, and I see a lot of cul-de-sacs. How are you going to address if, you know, we got to get fire trucks and/or ambulances down into one of those smaller cul-de-sacs to make sure, one, the safety of the first responders responding, and two, I mean, if there's going to be enough, you know, access points to provide water to that area?
Yeah, absolutely. So, when we go and do these phases, we'll make sure that we have water mains in place up and down the streets to have the fire coverage that's required in hydrant spacing. On the cul-de-sacs, the city has a standard on the size that those need to be. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but those are designed so that a fire truck can get in and get fully turned around, suppress fires, get back out. And we feel that we've laid these streets out. So, the, the MoDOT roadway has huge spacing being a primary arterial and how we can have access points. So you can see, we've only really got two intersections, three if you count the one in the bottom corner. So, we feel like we did a good job in using those and getting more access points throughout. And so, with each phase, there's an actual looped road all the way through. So each phase has more than one access point in case there was something to happen there. So, long story short, we feel like we've covered that very well as far as fire concern goes.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so if you have any other questions, please get with staff. Moving on to item number 13 on our agenda, this is 22-25. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-25 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 4.92 acres located at 1022 North Republic Commons Drive from General Commercial C2 to Multifamily Residential R3.
Thank you, ma'am. You're back again.
I'm back again. Thank you. Republic Land LLC has applied for the rezoning. Again, this is from General Commercial to R3, which is Multifamily Residential. The parcel contains no existing structures. The applicant is intending to build an assisted living and memory care facility of approximately 65,000 square feet on this particular parcel. The property is surrounded by General Commercial to the north, east, south, and west. The property can be served by municipal water and sewer. It does not contain any floodplain or identified sinkholes. It has direct access to North Republic Commons Drive currently. The rezoning is in compliance with the city's adopted master plans. No opposition was presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week. The Planning and Zoning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of the rezoning request, and the Builds Department is also recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from council? Seeing none, I will open it up to citizen participation. I understand that we have Cameron here. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and your address and tell us what you want to say.
Alright, my name is Cameron. I'm here with Anderson representing the owner. Do you need my address or Anderson's address?
Let's go with Anderson's.
Okay, 3213 Southwest Bypass, Springfield, Missouri.
Thank you very much. And what did you want to tell us this evening?
I'm really here just to answer any questions that you guys, guys have. Just echo what's already been said. The assisted memory care facility will be about 67,000 square feet. I think they're estimating somewhere around 80 beds right now and about as many rooms, and then a construction cost of about $12 million.
Thank you. Do we have questions from council on this issue? Seeing none. Cameron, I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Please remember this is a first read, so if you have any questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 14, this is 22-26. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-26 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving a special use permit for Wilmouth Oil Company LLC to operate a self-storage facility on property located at the southwest termination of West Civic Boulevard.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Tabor?
Good evening. Chris Tabor, Principal Planner for the Builds Department. Wilmouth Oil Company LLC has applied for a special use permit to operate self-storage facilities on 14 acres of property located at the southwest termination of West Civic Boulevard. A special use permit is required to operate new storage facilities or to improve existing ones. The subject property is currently vacant except for detention pond in the southeast corner of the property. The applicant intends to develop the property as described in the site plan, which has been included as an exhibit. A full build-out of the site would have approximately 199,000 square feet of storage space, including a small office. The detention pond and any onsite conveyance for stormwater will continue to operate in an equivalent or improved manner if the property develops. The site currently has access to municipal water and sanitary sewer services. If the special use permit is granted, the applicant will be eligible to submit an application for a new commercial building permit. The new commercial building permit application would then go through the review process to ensure conformance with the city's adopted codes, including the zoning code, regulations, relevant building codes, and the fire code. This process includes meeting city regulations as they pertain to parking, screening, or buffering, lighting, stormwater, et cetera. Staff considers the proposed special use permit request to be generally consistent with the city's special use permit ordinance and able to be adequately served by the city's transportation network and the city's municipal facilities. The Builds Department analysis does not account for the discretionary authority of the City Council to limit the placement and number of storage facilities in the city.
Thank you, sir. Do we have questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I will open it up for citizen participation. You're back.
I'm back. Ricky Haas. I think Brett needs to come up here and do this. 550 East St. Louis. Yep, this, so this project, the major concern that was brought to our attention and just, you know, when we started the project, was having all the single-family homes to the south. We understand that, you know, it's, they have their privacy, that's where they live. So, we're planning to provide a Type A buffer, which is more trees, shrubs, and fencing along that side. Most of the houses down there now have their own fences. We're going to put a second fence on our property and provide trees along there as well to kind of screen the headlights and make sure that they're not visually impacted by the project. So, that's kind of the big area of concern. We're also going to fence the entire project, so the south, the fence along the south will be solid for visual. Everything else would more, be more of like a, an iron fence with pickets, if you will. But, and then we've got two access points. There's one off of the street on the northwest and then one on the northeast. So, there'll be gates at those locations, and the main office, when folks come to the site, will be off of the east street there, and they will not be able to access the facility unless they have the code. And then there's an office there for people to pull into that parking lot. There will be a full-time employee here during normal business hours. And so, the building that that office is attached to, that's indoor storage. The rest of them are just your regular outdoor overhead, outside overdoor, overhead door, storage, just long buildings there. Everything will be paved on-site. We have, at final design, we'll analyze the existing detention basin there. It may, it's pretty close to the right size from what we've seen, but we haven't checked. It may need to be increased slightly, if anything. But we'll make sure that we're not negatively impacting the neighbors from a stormwater standpoint. We also plan to meet lighting code. We have code that we have to meet that says you can't have more than half a lumen per square foot on the neighboring property. So we'll do a photometric plan to make sure we're meeting that. So this is C2 zoning, so there could, you know, there's potential for this to be a commercial development. And so, the traffic that this generates is significantly less than what could potentially go there. Some of the neighbors were here at the Planning and Zoning Meeting. We kind of talked through some of those things. And ultimately, by the time I, I left the parking lot, they felt like this, this was a good thing, that they'd rather have this than a whatever, two or three-story.
How long did they chew on you out there, though?
It got dark. Anyway, with that, you know, we plan to do utilities at final design. We've got a water main through there. We'll provide hydrants. We'll make sure we've got fire truck lane, or fire lanes through between each building and double access points. So, yeah, with that, that's all I've got. If anybody has any questions.
Just a comment. Thank you for taking them into consideration and that extra screening there. I know they're going to appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read. Thank you for being here. And get with staff before you, before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 15 on our agenda. I thought you said we were going to have smaller agendas. Did I just remember what I wanted to remember?
I think it's just wishful thinking at this stage now.
Item number 15, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-27 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving the final plot of Oak Hills Phase 1 subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Haynes?
Thank you. The Builds Department received the final plot application for Oak Hills Phase 1 on March 29th. The final plot legally will subdivide approximately 11.23 acres of land into 27 residential lots. It also includes the dedication of right-of-way, utility, and stormwater easements. The final plot includes the dedication of 1,743 linear feet of street and 1,868 linear feet of sidewalk. The Builds Department and the city's technical review team have reviewed the final plot in compliance with the approved preliminary plot and also in conformance with our final plot ordinance. We are recommending approval.
What sort of, did anybody come to Planning and Zoning, any sort of citizen comment on this issue?
This didn't go to Planning and Zoning.
Right. Thank you. You put that really nicely when I asked that question. Thank you. It's been a day, guys. Any questions from council? Any discussion? Seeing none. Any citizen comment? Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 16, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-28 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the city administrator to execute an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Green County for the expansion of a portion of Highway MM between the Interstate 44 interchange and the Route 360 interchange.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew Nelson, Builds Administrator and thermostat expert.
I give up. I'm just done.
That doesn't get a raise, Andrew.
Okay. Anyway, so this is part three. I mentioned this last meeting. We had an ordinance for the financing. That was part two. Part three is Green County's participation in the project. This is a intergovernmental agreement where they'll allocate a total of $1.5 million to our MM expansion. They will do that over a period of five years.
Questions or discussion from council? Anything else?
That's it.
Alright. Please remember this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting with any questions. Moving on to item number 17, and this is the one we've all been waiting on. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-29 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I didn't think we were going to get a second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving budget amendment number one to the budget for the fiscal year 2022.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Megan Cook, Finance Director. I am bringing before you the budget amendment number one of 2022. We are requesting to amend eight funds. The first one is to increase our general fund by 182,000. This would accommodate some salaries for the Builds Department, Builds customer service rep, a building inspector, additional planner. It would also accommodate contract operation increase for the CU broadband, if that goes through. And then, sorry, the Microsoft license upgrade and then engineering for an admin office remodel, along with some other things. And then the Parks and Recreation Fund, we are asking to increase this by $45,000. This would accommodate contract operations for engineering costs. The total expenditures for the street fund to be increased by 132,000. This would accommodate salaries for, again, the one-fourth Builds customer service rep, building inspector, project manager, which you'll hear me repeat those because they're split between different funds where they all work together to pay for these services. Sorry. Grant fund to be increased by 16,463,000. This is for an additional dispersment that we were not aware of when we went into the budget season. And so this has been deposited already, so we wanted to get that on the books. Total expenditures for the CIST fund by 155,000. This was basically just due to timing of things coming in from last year. We do have the cash position to cover this. This is just due to timing, and we wanted to get it on the books to finalize projects and PD fleet vehicles. Total expenditure increase for the fire sales tax fund of 50,000. This is for portable radios for the fire department. Total expenditures for the water fund to be increased by 201,000. This is to also book the bond payment increase in fuel costs. And then those salaries that I talked about for the Builds customer service representative, the building inspector, and the project manager. And then an increase in the wastewater fund by $43 million, which this is attributable to the bond issuance that we just went through.
Wow.
And has come before you already. But those are the major changes. And so I just wanted to bring that before you, and we are requesting approval.
So I have a question. And I hope it's not a bad one, like my planning and zoning one. Was there, I know a lot of these are planned things that we know about, but we just have to wait to see, right?
Right.
We know it's going to be something. We just don't know exactly how much. Was there anything in what you just reported that caught you by surprise or caught the staff by surprise, like, oh, we weren't expecting that? That's outside of what we were planning?
No. I mean, the only thing that we were unaware of was the 16,000 that was going to come in for the grant. And that was just additional ARPA funding.
Okay. And nothing else caught you by surprise? It's not a trick question. It's just, like, when it comes to the books, I want to make sure everything's going the way we planned.
Yes.
And everything's the way we planned.
Yes. So we do go into the budget process in November. So a lot of times, there's things that we kind of know might be coming up, but we don't necessarily book till we know that it's actually going through, and we get approval through council. So like the $48 million, we wanted to make sure, one, we get approved for that. We go through all the processes that we need to do, make sure everything goes through appropriately, so.
It's probably good that we don't spend 48 million until we actually know we get 48 million.
Got it. All right. Any other, Mr. Gurk? Ask a better question than me. Low bar. I know some of it's the funding's coming from the bond, obviously, for the big one, but the other increases on there, where are the funds coming from to offset those additional expenditures?
Right. So you will notice some net loss there if you look at our summary sheet, but a lot of it is paid out of our cash balances, which, if we go into this, it's very planned out based off of things that we closed out where we didn't spend some funds in the previous year that would help accommodate these, like, capital expenditures, things that come into the new year.
And then, and I know we've seen some reports, but as quarter results come out, we've also seen some increased revenue.
Yes. We always, yeah, not always, sorry. We have seen and have been favored on a sales tax increase.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
What I might say, nothing really catches us off guard to accept the planning because we start in actually July, this budget. So it doesn't really come into play. It gets approved in November. But the biggest challenge for us as a growing community is adding, you know, we talk about the competency pillar and the trust edge pillars is us staying competent with the pace of growth that we have, having the right people to facilitate, maintain that level of service that we've been able to provide to the development community, to the community. We don't want to lose our connection and lose our identity or lose our way as to what that looks like. So having the right staff, so you hear another planner, you hear this position. It's, it's, all these positions come into play, like, making sure that we're utilizing our funds. So if we are seeing additional revenue, I'm like, okay, I'm willing to make that decision or make that proposal to this council where we wanted to wait to see how things would end the year. So we ended very favorably last year with a $400,000, $500,000 surplus. And that's, those that were recalled the first time, it was like 2,000. So to see that and then to say, okay, now we're ready, we're positioned to go out and add some more people, I think those are the things that are always going to be like, what do you need to do your job? And I think that that's the hardest thing to come back and explain, well, why didn't you budget for that in July? So we planned for it. It's just one of those things, like, with the growth and the additional housing, additional things that are coming on, the investments that we're seeing, it's just going to take a much larger team, and I'm proud of that team. But, so I think that nothing catches us by surprise except the fact that we have to keep adding more staff. And I think that's surprising how much it just keeps rolling in, and I just appreciate their work. But, yeah. Adding staff in the middle of a budget year is a little bit of an anomaly if you do public financing or budgeting. Normally, you do that at the beginning of the year, but I like the flexibility this council allows us to operate with it. If they need it, and their staff, we're going to bring it to you for hiring, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Please remember, this is a first read. You can get with staff before the next meeting, before we finalize it. Now we're going to move on to the finance report, so don't go.
Okay.
Give us the report.
All right. So quarter one of 2022 ended pretty well. So we ended the quarter with a cash balance of $65 million across all the funds. This is all funds inclusive. This is a major increase and is attributed to the wastewater bond issuance and public works issuance altogether of $42 million. Sales tax increase has been, we're looking at 18.8% year-to-date over quarter one, excluding the public safety. If you wanted to include that in, we are 28% with this public safety. And then, as far as our revenues and expenditures, we should be tracking on target at about 25%. All of our revenues are either right at that amount or exceeding that, so that is good. Most of that is attributable to the sales tax increases or the bond issuances. And then, all the expenditures are either under, or, well, all of them are under that, actually, so.
Excellent.
That is the update.
Any questions from council on these issues? I saw you thinking. Go ahead. The, you mentioned, obviously, the cash balances up due to the bond. What is that historical, if you took out the bond?
Yes.
Compared to previous or last year, I guess?
So at the end of December of 2021, we were at 15 million. So we're seeing a $50 million increase, 48 of that, or, yeah, 42 million of that. Well, I think it's actually 48 is due to the bond issuance. And then the rest would be accounted for by just the ARPA dispersment that came in and then just additional tax revenues, which includes property tax revenues and all of that.
Thanks. Any other questions or discussion? I've seen none. Thank you very much.
The one more thing, sorry. I wanted to make sure I didn't forget to mention, we did put before you a letter that typically comes at the time of the budget. So this will actually be to you guys, and then it would go with the budget booklet that we initially got approved in November.
Are you going to be doing this quarterly or is this?
No, this is annually. It will go along with the budget each season going on, going forward, sorry.
Got it. Anything else? Good?
Good.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jared, I want to thank you and Jennifer and the whole Parks team going on. Everybody's pulled together on the messaging for your renewals and the work that you put into it. One thing about it is that, Jared, I always know without a doubt you and your team are going to put your best foot forward to provide the most thorough information possible. And I think you exceeded that again this time. And I just thank you for that work. It's not easy. I know it's concerning. It's one of those things, you're like, hey, we want to see this, and we want to do it right. And I just, I know that you guys do a fantastic job of communicating and getting this out to the citizens. I will say that with all the discussions of our financial position, there is one thing. Obviously, we've talked a lot about the $48 million that is parked in the bank. That's, we are a growing community, and our banking needs have grown and continue to grow. So you will be seeing us put out an RFP or a request for proposals. The city has not opened up its banking or even asked for proposals in quite some time. It's only prudent, like you would do with being engineering, auditors, things of that nature, is to at least see, is there other opportunities to handle that much money? Because, I mean, having, how much did you say? $60 million is sitting in the bank. So making sure that we have, it's properly secured, make no mistake about it. There's no concerns about it. I made a notice about a year ago that in August of this year, we would be soliciting those bids, and we will be doing that, bringing some ideas and concepts back to this body for where our money will be in the future, be it if it's the same bank or other banks that we're going to do partnerships with. But we're anticipating, we continue to work on additional funding mechanisms to take care of our wastewater needs. We don't like to talk about them all the time, but we continue to work on efforts with the elected delegation in Jefferson City. And so I believe we're having very favorable conversations there and just want to, looking forward to having it really done. It's been a long year already, starting with that. So I appreciate Andrew, and everybody's allowed us to travel, to be gone, to do that. But hopefully, we'll have some good results. We're, we're still, I'll say this, we've sent out letters to Senator Blunt, Congressman Wong, Senator Hawley. We're asking, we're asking every single place we can for a water tower out by Convoy of Hope. Every single opportunity for grant funding, we constantly try to work to minimize the impact for our citizens. And Jen, I agree with you a lot. There's a lot of favor going on in the community and just where we're going. I appreciate your comments and your feedback as to, we do put our heart and soul into trying to do the best thing by the community and put it out there the best way we know how. But those efforts, I hope to believe, will yield fruit. But just like moving our money, it's not fun to talk about having that. You'd rather just leave it alone, but we got to do it in the best interest of the community as well. And really, that's all I have. Oh, I got, I didn't get to bring it with me, but I do, I was going to bring the award that we won last week in Minneapolis for, we were, our community was selected for the government class, for the Trusted Leader Summit. I will bring that award back. I had it, it was seven or eight pounds, like, it was like, and we didn't get our luggage back in the right time, anyway. But I look forward to bringing that, presenting it to this council because what it says, we, you know, just amongst our peers, you know, the University of Nebraska was represented as in that class, just a lot of really cool, one of five groups that we got to be in the government class, we were recognized for that award. And so I'm looking forward to bringing that back. But that just speaks volumes. Because like I told them, even when I said when I gave my presentation, I spoke to the alignment of this body and how, how the hard work that had to be done to take it from $2,000 in the bank to be to where we're at, to have the alignment of the staff, to see the things, and then just our community in general, to show up. I mean, you go to Have a Blast and you look at it, we have a great thing going on in this community, and we need to protect it. But we did it through those trust pillars. And so I'm proud of this, I'm proud of this elected body and the alignment that you all have. It allows us to do our job. And also for the mission, vision, and values. That's, that's pretty much the document that you all ratified in 2016 that says this is our new business plan. And it's allowed us to see the momentum that we have. It's not something that we take lightly. And we want to be completely humble about it. So we don't want to lose our identity. That's one thing we talk about. We want to stay the same humble group and keep working and pressing forward. And I just want to commend this community, this elected body, all the staff, and just all the people that make up our great town. It's just a blessing to serve. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Reports from council. Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Mayor. First of all, congratulations to our newest planning and zone commissioners. Really appreciate all the job planning and zoning does to bring us the finding of facts and everything that they do. I'd like to thank staff for all of the work that they did, putting everything into our agenda this evening and putting everything, all of the hard work into the tax proposals as well. And I'd also like to send out a big thank you to all of the conversations that we've had with the citizens last couple of weeks. I always look forward for things like this to happen because it always presents a very great opportunity to engage and talk with citizens. So very thankful for that, very thankful to the citizens that responded, and I'm sure we'll continue to have great conversations into the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Any other reports from council?
This is just a random thought. I was thinking about, you asked the question of what happens if we just were to stay the same. I think you're asking, Jared, like, if we don't move forward. And it made me think of Kmart and Sears because, like, they just didn't grow with the times. They weren't willing to, to think future, and it killed them, essentially. So I think that, too, as a community, if we're not willing to think futuristic and think about the upcoming generations and what we can hand off to them, then it will just kind of be the death of our community, really. But we do it so well. Not that we do it purposely, but we do it well. But I thought of Kmart and Sears.
But you're right. But it didn't, it didn't kill them immediately. It was a very slow, painful death.
Yes. Yes, it was sad to watch.
But failure to grow is a slow, painful death.
And just let you know, there is still three Kmart's still open.
Three.
Three.
All right. All right. Any other reports? Mayor's report.